Meeting of the Board of Selectment for the town of Halifax on Monday, August 31st, 2020. I guess the first thing to do is look at the agenda. Does anybody have anything to try to add to the agenda, or are we good with it?
Looks like a full agenda to me.
Good with me. Do you want it moved?
Yes.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, the first topic on the agenda is a COVID update from those involved in COVID. Start with Board of Health.
We're quiet right now, haven't had a new case in the town. So, and the numbers for states need to keep falling, so. But now, this is under control, about the schools reopening. Is there a requirement to move it?
Excellent.
Is there a five o'clock meeting today?
Yeah, to walk through, are you available for that?
One, I think I am.
Okay.
Right now, I am, if not, I'll walk through. Well, I don't have a meeting.
Okay.
Really, I think the only concern that that potential has would be in the nursing area.
Okay.
To make sure that that's going to be suitable, I'm sure that we can find an adequate work, reasonable space to have that.
Okay, cool.
Well, just you know, on that point, Rob and I, Jill asked me over as well this week to go over things. Rob and I generally do our archivacy inspection. We're going to do that Wednesday at one o'clock if you're available, that more to.
That would be perfect, actually.
So, that's our plan. Captain used to come with us a lot also.
Yeah, it makes sense to have all ears at the same time, yeah. Bob, while we have you, anything you want Triple E?
No. You accept that the one gentleman from Halifax had a heart attack when he was doing that.
Good, excellent.
Yeah, so that's good, we've had that to do with no new cases, you know, not West Island, not Triple E. Looks like they had an area's active spray.
Good.
And I heard that from Endar that they don't, at this point, expect to do another aerial spray, simply because we're not seeing any more cases.
If anybody walked outside early this morning, you might have thought we got our first frost this morning, but it was pretty nippy out there.
It was.
Which I'm sure it's not going to be too far behind. Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Chief?
So, I reached out to one, another machine for emergency management director in Homewood County, and asked them about what they were doing as far as vehicles. So, this particular town purchased two Tahoos, four Ford Escapes, five F-150s, two F-150s, ten K-1s.
One town?
Yeah.
And this is going to prove for COVID spending?
Yeah.
Did they, did they just replace everything they had there?
Well, so the vehicles are available for COVID-related things, you know, once the state, the way I consider it was, you buy the vehicles, they have to be designated for COVID and used for COVID-related things, and once the emergency ends, the town can continue to own and use those vehicles. Use those vehicles.
How many, how many vehicles was that, eleven?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Four, so four, so they bought Ford Escapes for like the council and agent director, they bought the veterans agent, like, unless went on, they bought Tahoos for the emergency management director, the assistant emergency management director, they bought F-150s for the community paramedic vehicles, the community paramedic supervising vehicle, they bought, uh, however you want to pickups to pick up COVID supplies, but that's not the vehicles.
I, I think the Board of Selectment could use three F-150s for, you know, COVID inspections.
Just to drive back and forth to the meetings that we've had.
Yeah, right, except they're COVID related.
You know, I don't have the capacity to talk about vehicles that kind of home.
I'm, sorry, I'll speak, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Oh, feel free.
I'd be more comfortable saying that we need another vehicle for the council and aging because of this, but not.
That's a legitimate buy, yeah.
Well, does it need, does it need a Volkswagen for the, on the backside?
I mean, you could make an argument for, for the maintenance guys because they're splitting shifts and doing that kind of thing, but.
And the health department.
And the health department, yeah.
In all honesty, and the.
No, no, seriously.
Like previous time, the health department, that's time. They're expected to respond 24/7, so it's time to act the guy to the guy.
So, definitely not a lot of the supplement money, I think, you know, we have money already available for. Sounds like a lot of communities have identified their COVID issues, and then there are also issues of things, you know, that maybe they were planning, have them in capital plan, but don't have the money to purchase that.
I was talking to Sandy, Sandy Wright the other day, and she was saying something about October being the deadline and that December.
Right, so what they said, sorry, Chief, go ahead. Want me to go or do you want me to go?
Well, I'm sorry.
Do you want me, sorry, so what, we were told last week was that this county is saying, you spend your money by the end of September. If you don't, it goes back into the pool and will be redistributed. So, yes, there's a deadline, there's not an absolute deadline, in a sense, it will still, we should have money available in November for October to December, but we have about a million dollars, I think it was the number, if I remember right, that is available to us for COVID-related expenses. But it's the first time, as of this meeting that Sandy Nolan went to on Thursday via Zoom, that this county said, oh, and now, you know, we've been saying you can carry the money over from month to month? Okay, if you haven't spent by the 30th, it goes back into the pool and will do a new redistribution.
Okay, so it was a proper affirmation, I wasn't sure, because they kept telling us, I thought it was December.
Oh, December's on October 7th. So, it sounds like, once the December COVID emergency goes.
That question is technically over.
Yes. People have used a lot this to purchase vehicles, I'm not able to do for other things.
Well, you know, the only way it follows up is that the feds come back and do an audit of some sort and check to see, in fact, what those vehicles or anything else are being used for. I don't think they're going to check on masks, but, you know, at some point, they do an audit of, you know.
Sure, and I think that they shouldn't be used for COVID.
Well, right, but the thing is that, sorry again.
But I think if you, if we put in for vehicles, they need to be vehicles that we know we're going to support long-term. Like, if we're going to add a vehicle to the fleet, we need to know that we're picking up that cost moving forward, and that's always been the issue.
Well, and the thing, and there has to be a more definite need with the council and aging van, as you pointed out.
I, I don't have a problem with inspectional services. I mean, a lot of that, to Bob's point, is in fact COVID-related.
I, I will follow the board's direction if you want to have a, I'll follow the board's direction, I mean, I can work with departments.
I mean, the worst thing that happens is we, if we can't support it down the road.
Well, no, the worst thing that happens is the audit.
Is what?
Is an audit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that if the feds come in and say, what are you using this vehicle for? And, you know, we had, you know, for inspection services, okay, you need it because of COVID, show me why you needed it for COVID.
I understand where you're going, yeah.
So, this is going to be answered that question by saying that they didn't want to put their inspectors in their own cars going out, and how since they could get contaminated and bring it back.
Right, but so we put them in a different car that the town owns that then could be contaminated with COVID. Unless, are we cleaning the cars?
I just want to let you know.
No, I, I understand that, and I'm not, and like, that's why I said I would follow the board's direction, I guess. I have issues, but, you know, they seem, they seem to be mire versus what the county sees as issues.
Right.
So, I'm happy to follow the board's direction. I mean, and I'm not going to, you know, put my foot down or anything like that, but.
It seems like the council and aging, when I, to listen to who I spoke to, who obviously follow our vehicles, that would be an absolute no-brainer, they would buy the vehicles.
Yeah, because we need to space those people out, we can't jam the van that we have.
I asked Jill for anything she had as far as information on that.
We got $67,000, and I put an article in Persus.
Okay, might be a little bit, like, she just got maybe a quote from, from, from Pembrokeshire, and they were, they were actually in the 60 range, and they ended up, because they do the municipal purchasing contract, they got an extra $6,000 off, so they were right around $50,000 off, $50,000 for a twelve-passenger van for that.
Do you have to take possession of the van by that date?
At the minute, basically, we, we should find a van that exists and get it.
Because it's what I was, yeah, going at.
I, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a van for the council and aging, no more than $70,000 from the CARES Act money.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
I mean, that's a definite legitimate purchase.
But if there are other large ticket items that the board wants to push on for, I'm happy to do that work, we just, you know, there's a big asterisk there, that's all. Not from me, just long-term, I see it as a big asterisk. And I understand, you know, and I don't want to be disadvantaged versus other communities either, but.
Did, did you get an email from Jill with a number of long-term subs and a dollar value for each sub? Because they did post the positions.
I know that I got an email from Jill Wednesday or Thursday. I'd have to go back and look if she gave me an actual number, I think they sort of came up.
Yeah, I thought, I thought she said like, there was a dollar amount, but she didn't say how many they were putting in for, she didn't, I'll bring it up with her tonight. Are we meeting on Thursday for COVID?
Yes.
Who, who would be the person, or is there anyone to contact about additional funds for, for vehicles for?
I mean, whether these are going to be eligible expenses, I sent my questions to Tom O'Brien.
So, if I were to contact Tom O'Brien, he would be the one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to take it upon myself to talk to Tom. I'm thinking about inspectional services in particular, specifically for the health.
What, what is the car outside for?
Um, that's available, but when it's serviceable, and it's not four-wheel drive, which is not a winter vehicle, which is also a problem. It's rear-wheel drive, which makes it even worse.
I never stopped on there, I'm not getting you.
Yeah.
Just tell you.
Yeah, it's suspect at best, but it was better than no vehicle, that, that's really what it came down to.
Holly was driving in it, and I saw her, oh, and you could hear the brakes sounding like they were squealing really bad.
Yeah, I, I, there's numerous issues, I mean, it's barely roadworthy. But, you know, in town, you know, you can make do when you have to, but I think the dependability and whatnot, and if it's a covered expense, and if it's eligible for that, the worst thing that happens in the future, if we can't sustain it, is we sell it. I, I, or.
It's another asterisk.
No, no, I understand where you're going with that. Even if we give the money back to the, to the feds, whatever, but, you know.
So, so we've already, to get off the car subject for a minute, we've already put in for the cleaning process for COVID, for the school and social services?
We've submitted some bills, we've been, I think we, we're supposed to be getting a check today at the end of the day, something like in the 40s, for reimbursement so far. We've not put in for any major expenditures. The stuff that we put in is like for the cleaning, for supplies, things like that, yes, but not for the future stuff, yeah. So, for instance, the school is obviously going to be doing, as you're pointing out, Troy, a cleaning regimen for the school, they'll need to have extra supplies and everything. Those should all be reimbursed, there's no question about that. I don't think that we've sent the bill in Plymouth County yet to get reimbursed. Same thing as with what Gorda mentioned about the subs, well, we haven't paid the subs anything yet, we, in, I think it's going to be a legitimate expense, but we're going to have to put in for it. Anything else to?
I had some, like, even if you add them up, and being generous, I listed some vehicles I thought, it was still around 230,000, it was still well below, you know, it makes it feel a little bit of a debt, but it's still well below, like, I, you know, first I was going to request the, the community paramedic vehicle, we had, you know, it sounds like they definitely are supporting COVID and stuff like that, so it wouldn't be a question, but I don't know if you want, how you want to do that, shall it be, or an individual request?
Well, I think what happened, I mean, we could bring, you know, I could put in for the, you know, whether it's Tom or myself, if we've got a specific vehicle in line for a specific purpose, then we can say, so, you know, we can make the case for it, then I put the case up to Tom O'Brien, you know, at this county treasurer, handling the money for Plymouth CARES, and say, is this an eligible expense? Are we going to get reimbursed? Because, you know, it's more likely the driveway, that we're taking, we're doing that project at risk for the drop-off pickup area, and everybody knows that. If we, if we get a, well, maybe, then, you know, again, we take it at risk, and say, you know, and there's a mechanism to say directives as to if you have COVID expenses, that, and they don't, they didn't know about CARES money when they came up with this, but if you have an overage because of COVID expenses, and you can, I think it's for three years, so let's say you had an overage of $150,000, you could put 50,000 in this year's budget, 50 in the next budget, 50 in the budget after that. So, there's ways of spreading that risk out, even if they don't provide the funding to us.
It sounds like this particular town, much of it has already been reimbursed.
Right, well, I think they're going to be hard, you know.
There was two that came in, he did tell me there was two that came into question, I'm not sure if he did some pickup truck, but he wasn't going to show it to the board, it's going to go back to him, but all the other ones were, are.
Is Tom coming here today?
I believe so. I don't think we missed that opportunity.
Tom, are you going to be here today?
Uh, surely will be if he's going to be here.
Okay.
I'm not posted, and, but I don't see this as a meeting, I see this as an event that you happen to be at, any more or less than Memorial Day, I press.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure that Troy and I walk away when you get to talk to him.
So, my thoughts for the request, I'm just throwing this up before, was the council and aging vehicle, the board of health vehicle, possibly another council and aging vehicle, like a, um, so you could want to escape that type of.
Well, they opened it up, the question is, they just buy one of those.
Oh, man.
Well, then, we just got them another vehicle.
Yeah, about three months ago.
Two months ago.
Okay, no, no, no. The community paramedic vehicle and emergency.
What are you thinking for paramedic vehicle?
Probably the F-150, one-on-one pickup truck, they can keep the supplies in the back, they have those, they'll allow it to come out, you know, the cap, you know.
Put a cap on it, right?
Yeah.
I'd say put in the request, and we'll get it, see if it's something we can sustain.
So, if you just send me the list, Tom's going to talk to Tom, but I'll also email if it's a follow-up?
Yeah, it won't hurt, at least put it in, all they can do is refuse it.
Are you going to include the board of health vehicle, or?
That wasn't included, yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, so Bob doesn't have to do it separately.
Right, so I'll, yeah, I'll include that, so. So, we don't need an additional vehicle for, for council and aging?
Let's verify.
Do you want to talk to Sue?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's verify, I mean, we know we need the van, does he need anything else besides a van?
The only question I have for the CARES Act money is what our liability to Silver Lake is for total, because they really haven't come up, Silver Lake has not presented a plan to any of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, as it is, I just got a letter from Norfolk Aggie saying, hey, think of us when you're getting some money, and, but they didn't put in a amount, it's sort of like, okay, I mean, I can send them a letter back and say, give us something real in writing rather than a general plea for funds.
Well, I mean, I could see them requesting money for transportation if they have to add more.
Sure.
I don't think, for the vote, they don't, oh, their transportation, sorry.
Was it the?
Norfolk Aggie.
Oh, Norfolk.
Because I don't know if they have to add costs for.
Well, don't, with transportation for them, for our kids, don't our kids just get driven there by their parents or something?
No, they, they provide transportation.
That's for you, boy.
So, I don't know if they have to get a bus, or.
Well, you take them from, take them from the high school?
Typically, they pick them up from them, from a.
From a personal home?
Either their house or a meeting point.
No, I can send them, I'll send a note and say, I need something specific, I can't do a general plea.
Yeah, because you're too, to the point, they could have to add vehicles and, and drivers.
The school committee has not voted to add bus monitors, but I'm assuming, I got some more emails this weekend about the school, and people bringing up different subjects, so that $27,000 per bus could be an expense that you see brought up again.
And what do we have, 10 buses?
10, that we, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not in.
No, I don't, well, at least it's as legitimate as anything else. Of course, the 20, we only get, I mean, the 27 is the year, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on the idea if we only have 27 kids on the bus, but.
Yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, that, that's a point to take into consideration, I mean, if we're talking a loaded bus, that's one thing, but a bus at 25% capacity would be,
It's going to be pretty easy for them to treat their hands to themselves.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yes. We want to hope. So, I did, I did like the meme I saw about the kids trading masks at school.
Yeah, I got, I got this one from the third trade.
That's nothing to think about.
Anything else COVID? So, I had a couple of non-COVID things. The highway department had made a request that three D vehicles be declared surplus. These are from the cemetery at Florida F-50, for the council and aging, the van that broke down and is not repairable, 2012 Ford E-Series chassis, infirmability maintenance in 2004 for it. So, the idea is, if you declare them surplus, Steve will contact the same agency that he's used before for selling at auction, the vehicles, we get the full price that you have to, you know, if you're buying, I don't know, it's like 3% or 5% charge, or service charge, or whatever. It's worked out fine, you stayed within the bidding laws and everything like that.
And beyond that, it's better to get rid of them sooner rather than later while they're still in some kind of shape.
Still getting a telephone call, and broke down in the middle of nowhere.
Well, beyond that, I.
We've let them sit.
We've let them sit at one point for so long that they were rotting, and then, you know, the, the bid prices were reflective of that, so let's get them out of there, at least that's my opinion.
So.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On 163, I gave you a copy of an email from Alan, he has just an update, there's a typo there, it's not 100 Lake Street's Tahoos, it's the 163 Plymouth, they're meeting, Board of Health, I believe, is meeting this week, so I'll see how things are going with, they've made any progress there on the property, please, trying out as hard as they can to work with, any day on that.
The vehicle will be, you know, will be knocking Wednesday night. And we posted it again today, I already posted the residence once, but they took out the plaque, I'm sorry.
Of course they did.
Cemetery fees, Steve asked for a change in the fee schedule, um, I think, so, he wants to add an engraving fee of $100 per plaque for the total place of the monuments, these, this is for, for what do you want, for the wall, or the urns, the cremation garden.
Why is it saying Saturday only?
Um, I don't know why he wanted specifically to reduce the fees for the Saturday interments, maybe he's not using as many people, I'm not sure. But those are the changes he likes, so there's a whole, um, the $100 is.
Just an engraving fee?
Yeah. Yeah, so you can see that, so a double, a double one would be 200, a single pillar would be 100. If you want, I can ask him about the interments for Saturdays, or why he's recommending the place go down. Yeah, because it seems counterintuitive, so I can, you know.
He's, he's matching the price from Monday to Friday after 1:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it's an overtime?
Okay, we'll do that, let me carry this over to Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. You want me to carry over everything from that, or just the interments, you'll prove the engravings to that?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve everything, everything but the change in the Saturday prices.
No, I'll second that, I'm just curious why, why Saturday has been separated out.
Well, I think Saturday's always been separated out, I think Gordon's right, but, you know, but I can ask, the only thing I can think of is, is using fewer people therefore needs less money if you want, but that's like, you know, just hypothesis.
All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, as for the executive session, I take about two minutes, since I believe I have some good news on that, just, I also provided you with, I, having thought about the town meeting on the 12th, if we, we need a Plan B, not for that day, but in case we get 175 people and we're over capacity, we'll know that we need to move it to someplace else on another date, so I did talk to the, to the Kingston collection for dates, those are the ones right now that they have available, I'm not asking for any decisions or anything, it's something I need to talk to Dennis and all you about, but I'm trying to think ahead on that now.
Okay.
And we're, I'm trying to set up with Dennis a pre-town meeting later this week, based on there's availability, plus.
Bless you.
Larry's and Barbara's, Barbara obviously is a little bit.
Busy.
Yeah.
I did, I did ask, I sent an email to make sure, because of voting tomorrow, I asked them not to park up front there, originally, they were scheduled all to be at Silver Lake, and I don't think that's happening now, I think they're going to be at the elementary school, so I asked them, I, I didn't know because of that if we should close down the playground for the afternoon hours tomorrow, so that people don't park there?
I, I think it's going to be hard, you mean, to put a lock on the gate?
No, I was just saying, put up a sign saying, close for the day until.
I don't, I don't think we've, I don't think we've ever closed the playground, even, I mean, we've had.
Large elections.
Well, not, not since HOPS went into effect, because we've only had HOPS for a year and a half, so we had, so, the 18 election, HOPS didn't exist in the current state, but, yeah.
No, I'm okay with that, whatever.
Well, who's policing it, aren't you?
Yeah, that, that, then what?
Alright, so, we need to move to, to executive session, so I need the board, somebody to make a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations with sergeants, patrol officers, highway mixed duty, police chief, fire chief, town administrator, and all unions in Silver Lake and Halifax Elementary, to discuss some strategy with respect to Florida. police, fire, chief, town magistrate, and all unions in Silver Lake and Halifax Elementary, as discussed in strategy with respect to collective bargaining. In an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
So moved.
So, I have to recuse myself from, yeah, contract, but the others I can, the others I can vote yes to go into executive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone, we will not be doing any regular business when we come out of executive session.